Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting for City Council for Tuesday, March 28, 2023. I have a meeting announcements. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamation. And we have one really important one today. We have two. Well, we actually have two important ones, but one for Chief Romano. Chief Romano, would you please come forward with your family and friends? Everybody here for the chief, come forward. And we're joined by Chief of Staff for Mayor Ganey, Jake Wheatley, to also celebrate in this. Thank you. You want to come up here? We're also joined by Public Safety Director Lee Schmidt. Director, if you want to come up here with us, please. Well, I guess this is what 45 years of service looks like. People coming out to support you. And Chief, on behalf of City Council, we want to thank you for your service. I'm sure the others will all want to say a few words. But we're going to start with the proclamation. We'll turn it over to Chief Wheatley to say a few things on behalf of the mayor and then you, council members and your family, or whoever wants to say anything. Whereas Ronald Romano, Chief of Emergency Medical Services, celebrates his 45th year with the city of Pittsburgh, God love you, on March 27. And whereas a graduate from the Forbes Health System Paramedic Program, Mr. Romano began his EMS career in 1975 with permanent ambulance service in Pittsburgh. In March 1978, he was hired as a paramedic with the city of Pittsburgh by then Director Glenn Cannon. And whereas, after working on the North Side at Medic Four for two years, he was promoted to crew chief and spent five years at Medic Three in the West End and a little over two years later, two years, at Medic Thirteen, which has since been taken out of service. And whereas in 1988, Romano was promoted to field supervisor and later changed to district chief. In February 2005, he advanced to the rank of division chief of the ambulance division. And as such, he handled all EMS planning for major events being held in the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, Mr. Romano was promoted to deputy chief of EMS in March 2016 and sworn in by then Mayor Bill Paduto as the seventh chief of Pittsburgh EMS in October of 2018. And whereas during Chief Romano's tenure, he oversaw the Bureau during the Tree of Life shooting in 2018, the Fern Hollow Bridge collapsed in 2022, and three years later, and three years of a worldwide pandemic. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and congratulate Chief Ronald Romano for his 45 years of service to the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, March 28, 2023 to be Chief Ronald Romano Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And that's what 45 years of service gets you. I wish I had like a watch or something to give you, but I just want to thank you for your service. Please be seated. I want to thank you for your service. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Wheatley first, but I'm going to give you the proclamation. And then Chief's going to say, or Chief Wheatley's going to say a few things on behalf of the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, one, recognize 45 years of service. You couldn't have done this without the support and help of your family. So I want to recognize your family for being here and standing with you as you've served and sacrificed for the city. So I want to say thank you to them for allowing us to have your service in the city. I also wanted, on behalf of the mayor, to thank you. Any individuals that spend one day in the city understands how much pressure and sacrifice it is to do the job to make the city safe, welcoming, and thriving for all of us citizens. But you've done it for 45 years. And sometimes you do it without congratulations and without recognition. But today, we are saying to you how proud we are to have been honored to have you serve this city in such a way and such a manner. So I want to say congratulations. And as someone who understands when you give up something that you've loved and done for so long, it's not always easy. But believe me when I say this, the city is very much a better place because you have done your job to the highest of its ability. So I want to say thank you personally and thank you from the mayor's office. And I also want to ask Assistant Chief to come up at this time. We have something that we want to give to you and pin on you.
Got to find it.
Counselor's going to give you the Rolex after this. Definitely there's nothing in the safe, but we can give you a key to the city.
I just wanted to say, Chief, it's been an honor being your deputy. You taught me the ropes. You said to me, one of the kindest things that you said to me not too long ago is that I was your right and your left hand. That was an honor. And it's been an honor to serve by your side. To commemorate your 45 years, there's a 45-year pin. Well deserved.
Chief, we've got to work closely together, very closely, over the past years. I've been director, prior to that as assistant director during the start of the pandemic, and even occasionally as a peer prior to that in EMS. Forty-five years is something to be very proud of, especially 45 years in EMS. EMS is a difficult career, as all of our public safety folks know that. And all of our public safety careers are challenging. But to spend 45 years, and as Chief Wheatley said, thank you to the family, that's 45 years of sacrifice that, you know, there's times that you don't get to enjoy family events and occasions or planned things, or when you're in the middle of a planned thing, you have to get up and leave, right? So we all know that's a challenge. And the dedication you've shown to the city of Pittsburgh for your years of service, congratulations. We're very honored to have worked with you and honored to have you serve our city.
I'm going to turn it over to Counsel. I want to start with Councilman Coghill, who's the Chair of Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, I just want to tell you, it's been a real honor to get to know you over the past seven years. And I want your family and the people you work with to know how hard you fight, whether it's for equipment, vehicles, as we know, and everything that paramedics need to do their job. And I feel our Pittsburgh paramedics are an elite force throughout the nation that's well documented. And I've had the honor of knowing many of them. So just wanted to say congratulations, and it's a testament to see your family. I don't know if we've ever had such a big crowd that came in for a retiree, but it's well deserved. I thank you for your service and, you know, I hope to keep in touch through the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And then I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Kraus now because he also cheered public safety for quite a few years. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Chief, and everyone assembled into your family. Chief Romano, you are a gentleman in a world of too few gentlemen. And you, I find to be a real class act. And I cannot thank you enough for your years of service to the city of Pittsburgh. We wish you all the best. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Chief. It's so great to see you here today. And as everyone said, we're really proud of our EMS and we're really proud of the work that you've done with them. And so we really appreciate you helping and investing in the city and keeping us safe. And also, I just can't help but mention also, it's so wonderful to see how many generations of family here. And it's just wonderful to see the support that you have. And we wish you well, and I really hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good morning, Chiefs. Good to see you. Unfortunately, we're losing you today. It's been nothing but a pleasure to get to know you and work with you over the years. You've been nothing but the constant professional when you're working with council members. One of your greatest testaments, I believe, though, considering that I could, I would arguably say we may have one of the greatest EMS services in the country. And the fact that you've trained those under you very well and you're leaving it in very capable hands also says a lot. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Romano, we will miss you terribly in the city. You've served for 45 years. I guess you told me 48 years as a paramedic. And I want to congratulate you for your service, for everything that everyone has already mentioned, and to acknowledge that you've served as chief during some pretty challenging times, to say the least. And I know that in the middle of all of that, you had the most competent staff, in part because of your training of them, but because you, also because you were the calm in the storm that they could turn to. And I know that being an EMS, being a paramedic is sometimes very, very challenging. And so I credit you with being that calm that they could turn to in those challenging moments and those tough moments. And thank you so much for your service. I hope that you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Yes, well, I just wanted to say thank you. Unfortunately, we, I'm new, and so we haven't had too much of an opportunity to work together. But, you know, clearly, looking at this crowd here, you know, 45 years, that is legacy level, legacy level commitment. So thank you so much for that. And yeah, good luck and all good things going forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Hi, Chief. I really appreciate everything you've done for not only the city of Pittsburgh, but also its residents and the people who visit the city. You know, you've been able to keep everyone safe as possible and make sure that they're, you know, taken care of whenever they need the care. And you've presided over some of the most challenging times in Pittsburgh, and you should be commended for that. And then also, you've presided over a time whenever there were some new innovative strategies happening that are being integrated into, you know, the EMS, you know, into your group. And I just want to commend you for that as well. So I appreciate everything you've done for the city and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is Councilman Burgess online? Okay, Councilman Burgess, I apologize. Councilman Burgess?
Chief, congratulations on a job well done. One of the things that you talk about in church, and I want to use it as an example here. The world celebrates achievements and accomplishments, you know? If you win a Super Bowl, if you win a war series, if you win a Stanley Club, if you win an NCAA championship, then, you know, you're great. But the Bible teaches and in the church, we celebrate faithfulness. We believe that faithfulness is the real symbol of one's success as a person and in life, being faithful. And you have been faithful to our city, and you've been faithful to your job. And I believe God is saying, well done. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
You don't have to listen to us anymore now. Thank you. It's time for you to say a few words.
Well, I have 45 years worth of notes. It's going to take a little bit. Thank you to Mayor Ganey and Chief Wheatley for stepping in. And thank you, City Council members, for this honor. I'm not going to say 45 years went back fast. And I was doing some math. I think I worked about 50 years with overtime, so. But I want to thanks to my family, my wife Lucy, daughters Rachel and Leah, my son Ron Jr., my daughter-in-law Erica, sons-in-law Zach and Mitch, my six grandchildren for being here today, my brother, my brother and my sister, my sister-in-law, my cousin, all my office staff, et cetera, numerous friends that surprised me being here today. I'm honored. And also, I mean, during my clinical training early in my career with EMS, I was lucky to meet my wife. And because of this career, we were able to buy our homes and raise a family together. So this job, career is meant more than just going to work. I was proud every day to put the city of Pittsburgh uniform on, no matter what color the shirt or rank. I want to thank my administrative staff for working with me for almost five years for the things we were able to accomplish and the great job we have done and continue to do during the pandemic. As the mayor asked me a few weeks ago, what was one of your greatest accomplishments? And numerous ones would jump out, you know? But I said, we did not have one employee go to the, get admitted to the hospital, let alone pass away during the pandemic. And we were able to continue to support the system and put the trucks on the road every day where numerous systems across the country were shutting down. And that's an accomplishment to all my staff. I mean, we hammered home what the employees had to do to stay safe. They didn't like it sometimes, obviously. I thank my district chiefs, who are my eyes on the street every day. I thank the field personnel who are out there now, taking care of the sick and injured each and every day. They may not, you know, I worry about them around the clock. Worry about them when I go to bed, worry about them when I get up. I hope I have made a difference in leading the Bureau of EMS. And I now leave it to the future leaders to continue to make it one of the best EMS systems in the country. Thank you, everyone, for being here today and for this proclamation. Just to clarify, I am going to retire at the end of April, and my last day in uniform is this week. So I thank you again. But it's been a wonderful career. And I hope for the future of EMS continues as it always has.
Thank you. With that said, Chief, you want to come up for a photo? Director, you and your team, I don't know who all is your team here. Do you want to bring them all up? Council members? Where'd you buy your house? Where do you live? Deb, Councilwoman Gross's district. Now you can retire in peace in District Two. You can come behind me. You can all come back here.
We can finish off.
They can do the whole thing. Yeah. They do it for fathers in school. Chris, you can get the whole thing, right? Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. Thank you, Chief Wheatley and Director Schmidt for being here. And I also want to acknowledge that we have, thank you. I also want to acknowledge that former Director Mike Gabel's in the audience. DPW Director. Morning. Dan Lavelle. And I'm going to also recognize former Chief Mark Boshin is here. Can we start? Thank you, Chief. I know. I think they want to take photos in here, that's why I'm trying not to rush. That was very nice. Okay, now we're going to begin with the next proclamation. You can come back in when it's over to take photos if you'd like. Thank you. Councilwoman Lavelle, you have a proclamation to be presented?
It can be read into the record.
Can be read into the record? Madam Clerk? That's right.
It can be read with all the others tonight.
Councilman Lavelle presents, be it, now therefore be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 28, 2023 to be Charles and Frankie Pace Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And can we read the other two into the record as well? Or the other? Yes.
Please have the Biscuits Bingo read in its entirety?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Whereas in 1998, Officer Christine Luffy, an animal lover and advocate, created the beloved annual fundraiser, Biscuit Bingo, which started as a small event in St. Pamphylis Church. And whereas, the success and popularity of this event has grown exponentially over the years, with last year's event raising nearly $60,000 to help animals around the city of Pittsburgh, and this year's event selling out in less than two weeks. And whereas, sponsored by Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and with the assistance of Officer Luffy's right and left hands, Ann Yeager and DJ Sahaski, the 2023 event on March 25, 2023 will mark its 25th anniversary. It will host 650 bingo players and raise much-needed funds for local animal shelters and animal welfare organizations in Pittsburgh. And whereas, the event is held at the IBEW Hall located on Pittsburgh's South Side. And for years, the use of the space has been generously donated by Tom McIntyre, Business Manager, free of charge. The event would also like to thank AMPCO Pittsburgh Charitable Foundation for their sizable donation. And whereas, this year's event could raise as much as $60,000 for animal assistance at Angel Ridge Animal Rescue, Animal Advocates, Animal Friends, Bow Wow Buddies Foundation, Forever Home Beagle Rescue, Homeless Cat Management Team, Humane Action Pittsburgh, Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh, Kindred Spirits Animal Rescue, Pigsburg Squealers, Pittsburgh CAT, and Rabbit Wrangler. And whereas, Biscuits Bingo is truly an amazing, family-friendly event. The love, kindness, and dedication of all involved has contributed to the outstanding success Biscuits Bingo has become. Because of the generosity, vision, and dedication of Officer Christine Luffy, so many more of Pittsburgh's animals in need can now be helped. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does recognize, celebrate, and thank the countless volunteers and donors who have made 25 years of Biscuits Bingo a triumph. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, March 25th, 2023 to be the 25th anniversary of Biscuits Bingo Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And can we read the other three and then we'll turn it over to councilmembers if they have anything to say?
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, March 29th, 2023 to be Carmella Mullen Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Be two more.
Council. Yep. Council President also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, March 29th, 2023 to be the commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War in the City of Pittsburgh. And Council President also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, March 29th, 2023 to be the commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the City of Pitts, of Vietnam War in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can you have a motion to approve all the proclamations?
Moved.
Second. Any discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. I appreciate your indulgence in allowing the proc to be read in its entirety. In my now 16th year on council, I have attended the Biscuit Bingo fundraiser and have wanted to recognize the event and Officer Luffy. Every year and for whatever reason, it just slipped by. This year being the 25th anniversary of the event, I could not let it pass without recognizing the work of Officer Luffy, our Bureau of Police, and so many hundreds of volunteers and thousands and thousands of people that come out to have attended that event over the year, over the years, and how much it has raised to help support animal welfare organizations throughout the city. Officer Luffy is truly one of the most amazing people I have ever had the honor to meet in my life. And she leads with her heart and her heart is all about animal welfare. And it shows every day in all of the work that she does in the Bureau. And her job is incredibly, incredibly difficult at times. And some of the stories that Officer Luffy has shared with me over the years keep me awake at night in, in, in the kinds of animal abuse cases that she has intervened in over the years. But to, to go back on a, a more positive note, this year, the, the event raised $64,550 in one afternoon with people just playing bingo. And Councilman Coghill stopped by, Controller, County Controller, Corey O'Clonter came by, Madam President has stopped by through the years. IBEW donates the space, which is incredibly generous. And over the years, the funds that have been raised exceed the high $300,000. And when you think of a bingo game, being able to, to raise that kind of money, it's pretty, pretty damn amazing. And so I, I had just had to take the opportunity and I appreciate the indulgence to recognize the event, to recognize Officer Luffy, the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers and thousands of people over the years that have come out to make that event such a successful event. So thank you for allowing my remarks, Madam President. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And Councilman Kraus, I just wanted to thank you for, for recognizing Christine Luffy. She, you know, puts her heart into what she does. And there's no bigger advocate, no bigger champion for animals and reptiles, for that matter as well, than Christine Luffy. So what a spectacle, you know? It was a great event. It was really something. I was never been so nervous in my life calling a bingo game, I will tell you that. So.
You did good, Councilman.
Thank you. A little too fast, they told me, but I slowed it down towards the end. So, no, I just wanted to thank you, Councilman Kraus, for recognizing Christine. She's my neighbor. Fantastic job for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Council. Anything else? We already voted, right? Ash, did we vote? Okay. Okay. Thank you. With that said, we will now move on to our next order of business, which is the public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council threats and profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell's Hoover. Teotihuacan, Mexico. I'm the Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. We use QIPO in what we do mathematically. A key to what I do is vote-by-voter verification of not only that, but for whom a citizen voted. The state of Pennsylvania and the Allegheny County election division do not permit a citizen to check to see whether he or she actually voted for the person he or she thinks he voted for. Ganey cannot prove that he voted for Ganey. He hasn't even tried to, to, to do that with the ACED. This is fraud. March 2023 is GIS-sponsored South North American Intelligence Month, and I encourage you to see Teata, Mary Thompson Fisher. The red copper intelligence of the South American peoples before Columbus, which include Europeans, Asians, and Africans, shows very high level in medicine, math, and astronomy, and in particular extraordinary diversity and complexity in, in languages. A concern of this council is equity, all kinds of equity, but particularly housing equity. So have Ganey and council sought $80 million, $50 million from the U.S. federal government, and $30 million from Pittsburgh taxpayers in equity resources for new housing in District Six, one of Pittsburgh's wealthiest districts for the Hill, Mr. Lavelle's district. The answer is yes. Sought $80 million for housing in District Five? No. $80 million for housing in District Four? No. District Three? No. District Two? No. District One? No. District Seven? No. District Eight? No. And District Nine, including Homewood? No. This Ganey Kale Smith Council Housing Equity Solution is, in my view, sociopathologically inequitable. It is systemic housism, if you like. This Ganey Kale Smith Lavelle Housing Equity Solution is a public government handout, hands-out approach. My approach, the GIS approach, individual, focusing on individual institutional achievement, inequality is justified, rewards return solution is a private one and uses, draws on the giants in this city, Pittsburgh Plate Glass and UPMC. Mr. Lavelle, what have you been doing?
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true City of Pittsburgh public servant. He served for over 46 years. And he worked till the very last day, in the last minute he was able to, according to his employment contract. Shady trees, not shady deals, and Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space. The Bon Air Elementary School was once a shining example of what a city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say, take it down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for detriment? This was read at my husband's funeral. It was written by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious and caring.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ralph, registered speaker is Ralph Williams. Ralph is online. Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate this. Thank you and thank the council for letting me speak today. I want to congratulate the gentleman who had 45 years of service in the City of Pittsburgh with the paramedics. I want to congratulate him on his retirement. The main reason I'm here to speak today is because I'm very disappointed in this council and very disappointed in the mayor's office. Downtown Pittsburgh is a mess. Denny Scott, who is the owner of Weenow World, is threatening to leave, to leave now. He's had enough of the nonsense. The Picasso people. 54 years they've had an office downtown are threatening to leave. Why is the mayor ordering the police and handcuffing them again and telling them that they cannot make drug arrests downtown or arrest any homeless people? Our downtown looks, looks, looks disgusting right now. It needs to be cleaned up. This council needs to get together with the mayor, come up with a plan. I know you already have one. You're going to open up some police stations downtown. You're having issues getting cops. I understand that. But let's stop handcuffing our police and let's start letting them do their jobs, okay? Because this is becoming a serious problem. Downtown Pittsburgh is the heart of your city. Not only just the neighborhoods, but downtown Pittsburgh. Corporate businesses, corporate offices, they want to leave. Their employees can't even come downtown. PNC Bank, who has their corporate office, is trying to get free parking for their employees to urge them to come downtown, okay? Things like this should not have to go on. People should be safe downtown. And it's not happening. You got kids fighting and beating up younger girls. Let's do something about Schuman Center. Let's start getting the parents, start hauling them to the carpet. Let's quit, let's have a backbone here on this council and with the mayor. And let's get this done because you know what? It's terrible. I live up here in Allentown. It's bad up here too, okay? We need a big cop from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. because every night there's a bar up here. Everybody runs out of lawn, shoots everybody. These are things that need to go on here. And I don't see anything happening. All I see is a bunch of talk. And I see a bunch of, oh, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Well, let's start doing it. Talk is cheap, all right? Everyone have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhauster list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. You know, some of them citizens, I am disgusted with this council. And the reason why is they will not start at 10 o'clock in the morning. They started the day at 10:27. So I am requesting, and you citizens back me up, that if they don't start on time, if we're down here, someone's down here, we can get up and we can speak till they start. You help me to make them start on time because they ain't going to start unless you do something. Okay, if we, if you don't want to do that, then let's fine them $5 a minute if they're late. Five dollars, every one of you, $5 a minute. You think I'm playing? I'm serious. I come down here, I'm disgusted, okay? I hear the, the Reverend, good Reverend talking about, what did he say? Something about faithfulness or something? And he won't even bring his old big butt down here to, then he's going to me, oh, I can't see. Oh, wait a minute, I got my T-shirt and stuff. Come on now. You just need to say something to him. You won't, you'll say it to me. Tell him he need to be in here. And if you don't come in, council people, you get three minutes like us. You can't keep on running your mouth like Kraus. Kraus, you know what? You did a good thing when you said you were retiring because the people were tired of you. Anytime I can walk through this building and you have a man that come to me and say, Ms. Brown, Kraus is treating you wrong. He said he's 100% wrong. He said, and as he walked away, he said, because I know I'm gay. Even the gay people think you do me wrong. I want you to understand that when I said that you should be mayor, I mean, should be, um, council president, didn't I say it? Nobody else said. I said he should be because I know he's been treated wrong. And then he comes and mistreats me, but asks me to find him a lover, but I can't speak? Please, come on now. I want to be able to speak what I want to speak about. If he can, if he can ask me to find him a lover, I should be able to say what I want. And I'm serious.
She's done. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Would you please let her know that she can't do that next week? Tomorrow. Okay, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Council. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1349, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Miller School Residences LLC, Miller School Residences 335 Miller Street, Third Ward, Allegheny County. Bill Number 1350, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 2932 Wiley Avenue.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1351, Resolution Providing for Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Norfolk Southern for Costs Associated with the Repairs to the South Nugly Avenue Bridge where the city will be responsible for certain aspects of the work as described in Exhibit B for reimbursement to Norfolk Southern thereof not to exceed a total of $21,868. Bill Number 1352, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs associated with the preliminary engineering, final design, and utility phases of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $9,270,000, an increase of $190,000 from the previously executed agreement. Reimbursable at 80% and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $47,000, a $0 increase from the previously executed agreement. And Bill Number 1353, Resolution Providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs associated with the study phase of the Beaver Avenue Esplanade Project, providing that the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $250,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1354, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Poise Foundation to Assist in Supporting the Arts and Related Production Services for the 2023 the Arts and Related Production Services for the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four Western Pennsylvania Juneteenth Homecoming Celebrations for a sum not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over two years and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill thirteen fifty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Chakotay, PC, for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed six thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Bill thirteen fifty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Marley Champion in the Amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Parked Vehicle near twenty-four fourteen Eckley Street from a City Environmental Services Vehicle on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Bill Number thirteen fifty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Max Petrunia, PC, in the Amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in Settlement of Litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number thirteen fifty-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Budget, the two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Program, and the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program by increasing Beaver Avenue Esplanade tip by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen fifty-nine, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number six forty-seven of two thousand and twenty, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-one Capital Budget and the two thousand and twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program, and the two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-six Capital Improvement Program by decreasing McFerrin Street Second Avenue Bridge by eighty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, increasing bridge upgrades by seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars, and increasing Smithfield Street by fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen sixty, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter two-ten Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Ameriserv of five thousand dollars to Purchase Smoke Detectors for Residents of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill thirteen sixty-one, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales Items A through J. Fifty-four sixty-three Broad Street, Zero Mountain Avenue, Zero Pliny Way, five forty Herschel Street, nine sixteen Elkton Street, two twenty-eight Stanhope Street, Zero Redknapp Street, six oh eight Redknapp Street, fifteen fifty-one Claritonica Street, and nine forty-eight Gerder Street. Bill thirteen sixty-two, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program Items A through N. Zero Beethoven Street, fifty-one forty Dresden Way, fifty-four thirty-nine Black Street, Zero Apple Street, seventy-three sixteen Hermann Ted Street, seventy-eight oh three Frankstown Avenue, three sixty-eight Flowers Avenue, three seventy-two Flowers Avenue, nine fifty-five Manton Way, nine eighty-three Industry Street, ninety-six Pasadena Street, four eighty-one Belonda Street, eight twenty-seven Suzeman Street, and thirty-six sixteen Granada Street. And Bill Number thirteen sixty-three, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter two-ten Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Accept a Donation from King Street Production in the Amount of five thousand dollars for the Ammon Recreation Center and Pool Art Neural.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number thirteen sixty-four, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements, leases and/or license agreement for the use of certain property for senior facilities for the provision of center services to seniors in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, chargeable to and payable from the seniors' Community Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation. Bill thirteen sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Parks of Recreation to Enter into a Sponsorship Agreement with the Cinema in the Parks Summer Film Series. Bill thirteen sixty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into a Community Partner Access Agreement or Agreements with the Macedonia Church of Pittsburgh at no cost for use of the Ammon Community Center in order to provide a Teen Enrichment Program to meet once a month on the third Sunday of the month, starting in April of two thousand and twenty-three. Bill thirteen sixty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution six sixty-two of two thousand and twenty, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Special Events to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Caliguri City of Pittsburgh Great Race, in order to extend the term of the agreement through two thousand and twenty-three. Bill thirteen sixty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement in individual amounts of ten thousand dollars or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services. Bill thirteen sixty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Port Authority of Allegheny County in an Amount Not to Exceed ten thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars for Transportation Services provided for the two thousand and twenty-two City of Pittsburgh Richard S. Caliguri Great Race on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. And Bill Number thirteen seventy, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to Enter into Sponsorship Agreements for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival, the festival.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number thirteen seventy-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Startup Participation Agreement with Selected Entities as part of the Cohorts of PGH Lab, and further authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into Program Participation Agreements with Local Municipal Entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number thirteen seventy-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven ninety-seven of two thousand seventeen, effective December twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and eighteen Capital Budget and the two thousand and eighteen Community Development Block Grant Program, and the two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill Number thirteen seventy-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, effective January one, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and nineteen Capital Budget and the two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, and the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements. And Bill Number thirteen seventy-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-two Capital Budget and the two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program, and the two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one appointment. Thank you.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number thirteen seventy-five, Resolution Appointing Ali R. Abdullah as a Member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for Term Concurrent with that of the mayor.
Thank you. What's the will of the body? Do you want to interview, or do you want to approve? Do you want to interview for Civic Design Center? No one want to interview?
Motion to interview.
Motion, okay. Thank you, Councilman. Motion to interview in a second.
I'm sorry.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get that scheduled, the interview scheduled. And two informing appointments.
Bill thirteen seventy-six, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Deja Cochran as an Assistant Director, Pittsburgh Partnership in the Human Resources Department. And Bill thirteen seventy-seven, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Charlene Holder as Assistant Director, Secretary, and Chief Examiner in the Human Resources Department.
I think since these are assistant directors, we just make a motion to red, receive, and file, but it's up to you if you want to interview. Can we have?
Motion to red, receive, and file, Madam President.
Thank you. Second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. Madam Clerk, is that okay, or do we need a voicemail? Did we need a voicemail, or is that okay the way I do it? Okay, good. Okay, just making sure. And we have one, Communications.
Bill thirteen seventy-eight, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Prior City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Reports for the Legislative Record.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to red, receive, and file?
Move, Madam President.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. And now, Madam Clerk, we'll now move on to unfinished business, and I have one appointment here.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents, while under unfinished business, twelve thirty-six, Resolution Appointing Giselle Batances as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, Mayor's Office Representative for Term Set to Expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Thank you. Is, can I have a motion to approve?
First, go first, please.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Giselle's approved. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is Reports of Committee for Final Action, and we'll begin with Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number thirteen forty-five, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve ninety-three, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Belinda Martin and her attorneys, Friday and Cox, in the Amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill thirteen ten, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Campbell Duran, PC, in an Amount Not to Exceed thirty thousand dollars for expert legal services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill thirteen eleven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Allegheny County Bar Association to Provide Legal Advertising to the City of Pittsburgh for Performing State-Mandated Advertising and Treasurer Sales. And Bill thirteen fifteen, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter two-ten Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from the Charles Street Area Corporation in the Amount of one hundred and one thousand dollars for the Kraus Strauss Park renovation.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye. I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number thirteen forty-six, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number twelve forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency and Operation Better Block for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars to Support the Safe Passages Program, which Places Community Elders in Schools to Prevent Violence.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? I'm going to again say I question the way this came to council, and that although I know that there are some groups doing great work, I don't know that all groups are doing great work that are receiving dollars, and the public wants some accountability with them. So I think going forward, we're working with our budget office and our solicitor to make sure that the public has the answers and the information they need to have confidence in what we're doing. With that said, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of passage, but aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number thirteen forty-seven, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill thirteen thirty-two, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed three million one hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-six cents, an increase of one million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to our last committee of the day, which is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs and Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number thirteen forty-eight, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill thirteen oh eight, Resolution Adopting a Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Lawrence Hall Project, which Proposes the Improvements to an Existing Building for the Use of a Food Hall and Bar. The Site Address is forty-six oh nine Butler Street, Ninth Ward.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with an affirmative recommendation. Bill thirteen oh eight, Resolution Adopting a Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Lawrence Hall Project, which Proposes the Improvements to an Existing Building for the Use of a Food Hall and Bar. The site address is forty-six oh nine Butler Street, Ninth Ward.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received. The legally required number of votes is finally passed. Thank you. And I have a few, we have motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. Council will hold a briefing this afternoon on PWSA Stormwater Strategic Plan. Sessions will begin at one thirty and at two. Also, this afternoon at three P.M., we will hold an executive session on Bills thirteen oh nine, thirteen thirteen, and thirteen fourteen relative to legal services and collective bargaining. It's really important for council members to come to this meeting, because we'll be opening the budget back up. Council Standing Committee Committee's meeting is scheduled for ten a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, March fifteenth.